All this being to order, may I jump into call roll please?
Matt Ryan Shaki.
Here.
Andy Selhertz.
Here.
Kathy Pucci.
Here.
Mary Valverde.
She is absent, excused.
Kevin Tansky.
Here.
Bart Kulitsky.
Here.
Rob Van Kirk.
Here. Would you please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance? If all of the pledge of allegiance, please remain standing for prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Father, we are grateful for the opportunity that we have to be here tonight. We thank you for the city of Brooklyn that we are also privileged to live in. We thank you for the folks that have joined us this evening to express their concerns and to learn what's going on in our city. But we thank you for the leaders that you've given to us. We thank you for our mayor. We thank you for all those that have a part in helping make Brooklyn a better place. Lord, I pray that you'll please give us all wisdom as we endeavor to lead. And we pray that this meeting tonight will bring honor and glory to you. We pray this stays in your name. Amen. Thank you. Please proceed. All right, we do have a set of minutes to approve from the meeting date of October 15th, 2019. Are there any comments or questions?
Motion to approve.
Okay.
To approve, Matt Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Andy Selhertz.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Bart Kulitsky.
Yes.
Rob Van Kirk.
Yes. Just as a note, immediately following this council meeting tonight, we will have a Public Safety and Environmental Committee meeting. And the discussion will be on the commercial vehicle parking policy in the city, as well as some concerns about traffic on DeLora. At this time, we'll have the public session. If anyone in the audience is saying they're safe and good and well for the city of Brooklyn, please step forward, state your name and address, and you'll be recognized. Please remember to keep your comments to five minutes or fewer.
Good evening, everyone. Victor Ardito, 7439 Outlook Avenue. I bring a few things in touch. September 15th, I had the misfortune of falling off my back roof. It's about eight foot tall. I thought I was safe, so definitely double-check yourself because I fell eight foot, broke four ribs. The Brooklyn EMS showed up and guys did a great job. And the one guy noticed, he goes, yeah, lucky it rained Saturday morning and it stormed. The ground had more bounce to it, so I didn't get hurt as bad, thankfully. One thing I'd like to say is about the things that have been going on in the city. The mayor and city council over the past years have done many things for the city. They've gone to the regional dispatch things, which a lot of cities have gone to that are much bigger than Brooklyn to put the money savings. The mayor's also had public meetings with everyone that wants to talk with her, that gives them an opportunity to talk. Currently, the city's working on hiring new police. Several new police vehicles have been purchased over the last several years also with the mayor and city council. They're working towards group discounts. The service garage has updated with several new vehicles and also with the lighting in the garage. The new senior vehicle was purchased with the help of a grant. Solar panels, it was Kevin Tansky who we've had a lot to do with in the city, which helped out a lot. They've been working to figure out how to build a new police station without going broke, keeping it under budget. They did a nice job to me with the Tiedemann in Memphis purchasing all the property to make it available for somebody to buy a larger part of the land to do something with. Many new businesses have also worked into getting into the city. They've also been trying to work with the school board, and it seems like the school board doesn't always want to work with the city. Over the years, I just found out recently, the school board in the past, they could have used the money that they spent on the artificial turf football field to repair the school and put a proper roof on there. But somehow whoever was in charge back then in the school board decided to put down a football field and let the ceiling leak on the building. It made a lot of sense to everyone. So I thought also is keep it in mind, there's an election coming up for school board members. Think about putting a lot of new members in there that might be thinking the right way, the way the people do, about making your money work for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ardito, and I'm glad you're okay. Glad to see you back.
Everything was fine until the sun stopped.
Earl Blom, 4724 Says Drive. Just want to remind everybody, this coming Election Day, November 5th, please support Issue Two. Issue Two is renewal levy for our schools. It amounts to 10% of the school's budget, which is a very critical amount of money that we need to educate our children. Let's put our children's education at the top of our priorities, and remember, it's the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blom. Okay. Well, now move on with reports of communities, commissions, and wards. We'll begin this evening with the Finance Committee. We did meet prior to the council meeting, as we typically do, at 6:30 to discuss the following. The first was ordinance 2019-40, authorizing a community cost share agreement, transfer agreement with the sewer district for the purchase and improvement of the property known as 10716 Bid Off Road. The city is currently working with the sewer district to acquire this property. The contract has been drafted and tonight's being placed on second reading. Mr. Butler gave us an updated overview look of what the property would look like once the water resource project is complete. I went over last time exactly what would entail, but I'll do that again briefly tonight. As far as the purchase, the city of Brooklyn will front the $172,000. That will not be taken out of our general fund. It will be taken out of the stormwater fees that we currently have with the sewer district. Then the sewer district will reimburse the city $147,000 of those fees that will either take place at the end of this year or sometime in 2020. The remaining balance is $25,000. That will be the city of Brooklyn's portion of the sewer fees that will go towards that purchase. Once the district takes ownership of the property, they will then perform what they refer to as a water resource project on the property. And that's to be consistent with their implementation of the regional stormwater management plan for voluntary property acquisitions. Upon review of the parcel, the district is recommending to convert the low-lying turf lawn area to a barium corridor along Big Creek. The 100-year flood plain along the Big Creek within the parcel is in a good vintaged condition, and the stream banks are stable. There's no need to intrude into this area. So expansion of the corridor will benefit water quality and flood control for the lawn area, larger flood events. We are proposing, the sewer district is proposing tree planting and flood plain native seed mix planting in the turf lawn areas. The district will also demolish the existing residential home on the property and will also remove all impervious surfaces around the property. Once the water resource project is complete by the sewer district, the city will then obtain ownership of the property once again, and the property will be left as is. The city also is building into the contract a right-of-way for residents that currently use the back portion of this property to access their own property, and that's down a steep slope. And the right-of-way will not interfere in any way with the water resource project or will have no impact on the project with the sewer district. As far as the public purpose statement, the sewer district provided this. Acquisition of the fee simple interest in permanent parcel number 43212018, or 10716 Bid Off, will assist the sewer district in its pragmatic goal to improve stream flow and operation of the stormwater system along Big Creek. Streams with active flood plains are able to flow over their banks along the riparian area of the waterway, which reduces velocity and subsequently reduces erosion. By permanently protecting the 100-year flood plain along Big Creek within this parcel, the likelihood of downstream erosion and flooding along the regional stormwater system will be minimized. In particular, stream flow velocities at the Parkview Estates Apartments property. Additionally, protection of a 100-year flood plain along Big Creek within the parcel assures the areas will not be developed in the future with impacts at the 100-year flood plain and assists with floodwater conveyance downstream of the commercial quarters at Brook Park Road and Cascade Crossing. And we are all well aware of the issues that we have at Brook Park Road with flooding when it rains. And so that is 2019-40. That's on second reading. Secondly, is ordinance 2019-41, authorizing the mayor to enter an agreement with Quest Property Holdings for the purchase of certain real property known as 11050 Memphis Avenue. And this is the house that is just before you go under the bridge to go into Lyndale. It's on the right-hand side when you're leaving the city of Brooklyn. And it's been an eyesore in this city for as long as I can remember. And the city's going to be able to purchase this property for $30,000. Once the city acquires the property, we will then seek funds to have the house torn down. It is blight in this area, and the city's been trying to acquire this house for some time. The house is basically useless as a house because it's not connected to the water or the sewer system. And so, once this house is purchased, if we agree to that, it will be then torn down, and it will no longer be an eyesore going into Lyndale or coming out of Lyndale into Brooklyn. And then the last item we talked about this evening was ordinance 2019-43, amending and updating the capital asset policy for the city. As was discovered by the audit that took place in recent weeks, a few of our capital asset policies did not match current practices. And so, the new plan that is on site right this evening will accurately reflect what is actually taking place. I apologize that my phone is not on silent. I apologize for that. That concludes our finance meeting. The finance meetings do take place at 6:30, just prior to the council meetings. At this time, we'll move on to the Recreation Board, Councilman Tansky.
Thank you. The next Recreation Board meeting will be held on Wednesday, November 20th, in the Rec Center meeting room at 7:00 PM. That concludes my report.
All right, next up is Domestic Abuse Commission, Councilman Ryan Shaki.
Thank you. Earlier this month, the commission met at Panera for a monthly meeting. Attorney Lindsay Gordina was our guest speaker. She gave the commission some background on the work she does as an attorney advocating and representing for domestic abuse victims. Lindsay also talked to us about the legislation that we passed earlier this year to give domestic abuse victims housing rights and how important it is. She talked about a situation several years ago where a client of hers from Brooklyn could have benefited from this legislation and how she knows it can help victims in the future. Our next meeting will be on Wednesday, November 13th, at the Westbrook Apartment Community Room. And also, I want to thank everyone. I know I have one more load to pick up downstairs, who donated to the donation drive we held earlier this month. I had to come up here three different times because my Chevy Cruze does not hold a lot. So thank you to everyone who participated in that. And that ends my report.
Thank you. The Planning Commission meeting will take place on November 7th, Thursday, at 6:00 PM to hear the following. A request from Atom Signs for digital gas price signs on fuel station canopy at 10250 Brook Park Road. A request from Agile Signs for a sign package for Fairfield Inn at 5110 Tiedemann Road. A request from John Rakakis for a conditional use for a recreational facility in a multifamily planned development, District 8707 Memphis Avenue. And this is the facility that currently houses the Batty Cage facility. And then, a request from Kim Lee Horn Associates for a conditional use for a drive-through in a light industrial district at 10330 Cascade Crossing. Also, a request from Kim Lee Horn and Associates for a preliminary site plan approval for a Starbucks drive-through at 10330 Cascade Crossing. And this is the property that currently was the Steak and Shake. And so, Starbucks is wanting to move into that facility, and so if all goes as planned, that building will no longer be vacant. At this time, we'll have the school board liaison. Back to you, Ms. Ryan Shaki.
Thank you. The school board has a renewal levy on the ballot next Tuesday, November 5th. This is renewal levy with no new taxes. And that ends my report.
Thank you. We'll now move on with reports of councils, and guess what? You're up first tonight, Ms. Ryan Shaki.
On Cleveland.com today, there was an article about how Fairview Park City Council is considering similar legislation to that of our housing rights for domestic abuse victims. I talked with Councilman McDonough, who is introducing the legislation purposely in October, which is recognized as Domestic Abuse Awareness Month around the nation, about the Brooklyn legislation. I've also been reached out to by several other cities around Cuyahoga County who are interested in similar legislation in their communities, as the state has not yet done anything at their level. Domestic abuse is one of the leading causes of homelessness. I want to thank all of my fellow council members who helped pass this legislation unanimously earlier this year. And, not to be repetitive, but I'm going to be, a week from tomorrow, Tuesday, November 5th is Election Day. It's so important. There are a ton of local candidates and issues on the ballot. Polls will be open from 6:30 AM until 7:30 PM. Please vote on or before November 5th if you haven't already. And also, please vote yes on Issue Two, the Brooklyn School Board levy. It is no additional taxes. And that ends my report.
Thank you. Next up is Mr. Selhertz.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you to Nick Marulis and several of students from Campus Life for helping with the fresh produce distribution behind City Hall last Tuesday. This Friday night's the last home football game for Brooklyn this year, and it will be senior night highlighted by fireworks after the game. The NHL and USA Hockey have joined together to offer Try Hockey for Free Day on Saturday, November 9th, 2019. Brooklyn Youth Hockey Association will be hosting a clinic for children between the ages of four and 10 at the Rec Center, starting at 10:45 AM. Registration starts at 10:00 AM. Pre-register at www.clevelandsharks.com or www tryhockeyforfree.com. Skates are provided, but please bring along a hockey helmet or bike helmet and gloves. Congratulations to the junior flag team for winning a championship against Struggsville on Saturday by a score of 14 to nothing. They also finished the season undefeated. As you've heard, Tuesday, November 5th, next week, is Election Day. Please go out and vote, no matter who you vote for, even if it's only for issues, go out and vote. In regards to issues, please vote yes on Issue Two, as you've heard from a number of people already. It's no new taxes, it's for the schools, it's a good percentage of their operating budget. It's an important thing, so please vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Mrs. Pucci.
Good evening. First, I'd like to congratulate the mayor's secretary, Ms. Jill Ludwig. Jill was awarded one of the Bright Star Awards from the Northern Ohio area of Chamber of Commerce's. Jill's a very dedicated employee, and it's very nice to see her get this well-deserved recognition. So congratulations to Jill. This past Saturday was the DEA prescription drug take-back event, and there was quite a bit of publicity encouraging people to also turn in vaping devices and cartridges. I had a resident inquire if we were going to accept these items in our own drug disposal box. So the chief checked into this, and the answer is yes. This box is located in the lobby of the police department, so there's 24/7 access. You can drop off any unused or expired medications. Just no liquids or needles, please. And I'm going to be a little redundant, just because this is such an important issue. Reminder that early voting is still going on, both by mail or in person down at the Board of Elections. There really isn't any excuse anymore why someone can't vote. Even if you don't want to do it by mail, you can go down to the Board of Elections during specified hours and literally vote in person early. Please make sure you vote, and please support Issue Two, which is the school renewal. This levy produces almost $1.6 million, and these funds are critical to the stability of our school system. So please support this renewal, and no increase in this tax. I had read several articles about the Stop the Bleed initiative, including that Fairview Hospital was going to provide these kits. And local fire departments would provide training to the Lakewood, Fairview Park, and Olmsted Falls school systems. Stop the Bleed kits, they include a tourniquet, bandages, and trauma scissors. These are installed in schools. The idea is that if there were an incident, there would be access to these vital supplies to stop the bleeding before the first responders are available or arrive on the scene. Uncontrolled bleeding following a traumatic injury is the number-one cause of preventable death from a trauma. Just 10 minutes of blood loss could be life-threatening. So these kits can be critical to survival. I asked Chief Paul to check to see if UH Parma would be willing to provide these for our school system, and the answer is yes. I've already reached out to the schools on this, and Chief, I'll let you know as soon as I hear back with who their point person is going to be on this. Much like the new door locks that they installed in the schools over the summer, our hope is that something like this is never needed. However, it's better to have them just in case. Mr. Kalsar, I saw when we received the Planning Commission docket today that the Up to Bat facility is on the docket. Could you, I don't know if you, you could wait till your report if you want, but could you provide us an update on what's going on? Because I think that's a little bit different than what we last thought was happening there. And I know there's a lot of interest. I already had a resident ask me about it. If you are out on Halloween during 6 to 8, please be extra cautious while our children are out trick-or-treating. And reminder that this Sunday, November 3rd, is the end of daylight savings time, so that we will be turning our clocks back. This is also when we should be changing the batteries in our smoke detectors and CO detectors, if you still have that type. If you have the detectors that last for 10 years, you should be double-checking the date on those and also test the devices. These devices do save lives, so let's make sure they're in good working order. If you need batteries or detectors, please contact the fire department. I would like to thank those who spoke this evening. And regarding ordinance number 2019-40, which is the agreement with the sewer district for the property on Bid Off, it is only on second reading this evening. However, I would like to thank Matt Sharver, who's the Deputy Director of Watershed Programs, for his work on this, especially for developing and providing us with the public purpose statement. So we can be clear that there is a public purpose, what it is, which I believe is vital to us being able to move forward with this unique situation. And that completes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Mr. Tansky.
Thank you. This is my report from last council meeting that I wasn't able to attend. The Brooklyn High School Marching Band took part in the Ohio State Marching Band Buckeye Invitational at Ohio Stadium in Columbus. In Columbus in Ohio, I'm sorry, on Saturday, September 28th. This statewide band competition included many high school bands throughout Ohio. Evening concluded with a special performance from the Ohio State Marching Band. I also would like to talk about the recent county's legislation to ban plastic bags in our city. I've taken a hard look at this legislation, especially the exemptions that affect the consumer and businesses in our community. I cannot support discrimination against certain businesses. In reading the language in the county legislation, there are other types of disposable bags which would not be affected, such as a bag that a restaurant gives a customer to take food home. Another example would be a bag used to package a bulk item. And there are several more instances where the legislation allows for the usage of disposable bags for certain areas of businesses. Where these same bags, where these same types of bags are not allowed in the same proximity or location. For instance, a retail establishment across would be allowed to give a plastic bag to the consumer, yet a restaurant next door would not, would be allowed. As a council member, I cannot support this legislation as written. This is direct discrimination against certain businesses, and we as a city should have a say in this matter. Furthermore, I have checked out retention basins and waterways in other areas throughout the county and noticed that the majority, 90% of garbage, such as cans, plastic bottles, cigarette butts, and so forth, are being washed into the sewers and trapped in the basins. There needs to be more discussion between the county and the surrounding communities to address the garbage problem as a whole, not just plastic bags. From what I'm hearing, there have been no conversations between our council president and the county when the legislation was being drafted. Until this legislation was moved forward to cities, then there was some discussion. There needs to be more discussion on the pros and cons, so that our city has the opportunity to voice any concerns that would affect each and every one of us. Until then, we can't make wise decisions.
Nick, concludes your report. Thank you. Next up is Mrs. Plitz.
Thank you, Mr. Van Kirk. Good evening. Big Creek connects, and the Laurel Garden Club sponsored a nature hike of the Oxbow yesterday. What a treasure we have in our own backyard. Garrett Ormeson, naturalist from the Cleveland Museum of Natural History, guided our tour. There were about 30 participants. The trail was difficult with rocks, tree branches, and wet fallen leaves. And I was exhausted after the two-hour hike, but it was worth every minute of it. If it is offered in the future, I would advise you to take advantage of it. You won't be disappointed. Medicare Supplement and Advantage Plans enrollment for 2020 is from October 15th through December 7th. Appointments are available every Friday. Call the Senior Center at 216-635-4222 if you are interested in a one-on-one meeting to answer the questions you may have on the subject. I would also like to congratulate Jill, our rising star. I met her in 2000 when we worked together at City Hall way back then, and she was a star then, and she continues to rise. Thank you, Jill, for all the hard work that you've done. As far as voting goes, it is a privilege, no, it is an obligation that we have, not a privilege, to vote. Whether we vote for or against a person, or for or against an issue, people need to vote to have their voice heard. So please, please, vote on next November 5th. And vote for the school issue because, really, there is no tax increase on this, and our children deserve it. And that ends my report.
Thank you, Ms. Plitz. Just a note of interest, our next council meeting will actually be on Tuesday, November 12th, and that is in recognition of Veterans Day, which will be honored, which we recognize on November 11th. And so, I want to thank our veterans for their service, and we'll move our meeting to the 12th. Just want to address something, and it seems like every time that this comes up, I have to address it. Because I've made a decision not to use this council platform to endorse or not endorse any certain issue as far as what to vote on. There's been assumptions that have been made that somehow I'm either for or against something, and that's exactly what those are, are just assumptions. I have given a good portion of my life as a teacher to teach our youth. And so, to make the assumption that because I don't either endorse or not endorse a certain issue, that I'm somehow against that is absurd. I love the youth of this city. I love the youth of America. Otherwise, I would not have given my life to be a teacher. And so, just want to clear that up. The school is a vital part of our city. I've said it 100 times. The main problem, and I've said this 100 times, is the funding formula at the state level that has to be addressed. Otherwise, our community is going to continue to struggle with funding for the schools. That is the most important thing that needs to take place, is for that to happen. And as far as not taking a position, I'm not knocking any of my council members there. They're welcome to do whatever they see fit to do. I've just made that decision. So to make that assumption is false, and is inaccurate, and it is just that, an assumption. If anyone would like to contact me about my own personal feelings on that, I'd be happy to communicate with anyone on a one-on-one level. And that's all I have. So at this time, I'll turn it over to the mayor.
Thank you, Council President Van Kirk. I know after this meeting, we have to discuss an important issue about the commercial vehicles. I know we've received a lot of complaints, and some of our police officers have been writing tickets for this ordinance that has been in effect for a long time and is modified back in 2012. And I think it's an important issue that we discussed today, but there are two more issues I would like to send to committee for city council to consider. One is some limitations on short-term rentals, or those houses that are being rented out on Airbnb and such websites like that. I know we've had a couple of issues at one particular house, so I would like to take a look at that. And also, if you recall, two meetings ago, our law director sent something about smoking in the park, is something introduced by our Recreation Center. So I'd hope to send that to committee after maybe the next meeting. Thank you. Also, I wanted to thank Mary Jo Banish. I know we, a lot of recognition for my assistant Jill Ludwig, which I mentioned last time, but I also want to thank Mary Jo Banish. If you missed it on our city's Facebook page, we've been going through a process of digitizing all of our records back to 1923. We are required by law to keep all city council minutes, city council ordinances, and we are going to be releasing that to the public, hopefully, very soon after we go through a training session with the directors, Mary Jo, and some staff, so we can teach residents how to use the platform as well. But it'll enable all of you guys to go right to our city website and look at old records. You can go look at the history of things. Also include our civil service meetings, our Planning Commission meetings, our zoning minutes, our city charter minutes. So it's a very cool thing that we've been working on for a while now, and we've finally got to that period of time where we could almost release that. So I just want to thank Mary Jo, because it was a lot of work putting this together. It started with going through our record retention policy, updating that, which was a lot of work in itself. So thank you, Mary Jo, for all of that. I also want to mention that our next council meeting is going to be moved to Tuesday, the 12th, because of a very important holiday, Veterans Day. So I do want to thank all the vets that have served our country. And it just goes into another important issue that has been mentioned numerous times, voting. These veterans, all the people who have served our country, did it for a reason, to protect our freedoms and our right to vote. And it's just another important reason. Whatever you're voting on, whoever you're voting for, we want to preserve that right to vote, so get out and vote next Tuesday. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll now move on to the direction reports. We begin this evening with our Finance Director, Mr. Reeves.
Good evening. I do have two items to share with city council tonight. The first item is the financial report through September 2019. That was included in your 19 board docs last week. So just a brief overview of the general fund through September 2019. Overall revenues are 91% of the estimated amount, at 13% greater than prior year, mainly as a result of one-time revenue, as from income tax receipts, from building permit revenues, and also from a workers' comp premium refund that we received in September of $190,000. and also from workers' kind of premium refund that we received in September of $190,000. As far as the commitments are concerned, we've been trending consistent with prior year, where we're 3% less than prior year, mainly as a result of the transfer from prior year that we did not make this year of $356,000. So, overall, our fund balance increased by approximately $2.3 million this year so far, which takes our unencumbered fund balance to $18.3 million. So, this has been trending pretty consistent with previous months, so no new surprises as in the September financial report. And also, I'd like to just remind city council of the budget work session that we have scheduled for November 18th. So, as part of that work session, we'll be talking about the 2019 general fund projection, 2020 general fund budget, the initial five-year financial forecast of the general fund, and also be introducing two policies for review as far as a fund balance policy and a financial planning policy at that meeting on November 18th. And that concludes my report. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Next up is our fire chief, Chief Paul.
Thank you, Mr. Van Kirk. On Sunday, November 10th, we'll be holding our annual Veterans Day breakfast in conjunction with our good friends from Walmart. Veterans, as well as their families, are invited to attend. The breakfast will be held 9:00 to noon. If you have any questions regarding your smoke detectors or batteries or need assistance, please contact the Brooklyn Fire Department, 216-635-4288. We will be happy, we will be happy to help you out. Thank you, have a good evening.
Mr. Kolsar, did you want to address the question that Mrs. Pucci, any word on her report? Can you answer some questions?
Not really, but I will. So, we do have the plans that were submitted for planning commission for this facility that's being proposed, the current batting facility down the street here on Memphis. They are proposing to install an athletic dome, membrane, single membrane structure that's air-supported, which will be 33,000 square feet in total size and 60 feet tall at its highest peak. So, I think that maybe a few people might want to attend that meeting.
Yes.
Maybe there's a nice, just a general question. So, are they proposing to keep it a baseball facility?
Not solely. Their thing is volleyball, so everything, the dome that they want to put up will be strictly volleyball courts, and they'll keep the batting facility building, you know, as-is. They're proposing to do like a cement board siding on it. We had conversations about them sprucing up that place at least, so.
May I be recognized? I mean, just to make everyone understand, this is on the agenda, does not necessarily mean that it's moving forward. It is a requested conditional use, and I think Dave was very clear to the people proposing it, some of the limitations, so.
And that's why we have the planning commission meetings, so I'm sure it'll be interesting next Thursday.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kolsar. All right. That concludes our reports from our directors. We'll now move on to legislation. The first item we have is a council confirmation for Skyline Chili at 0 Tiedemann Road. Dear council, or dear members of council, the planning commission at its regular meeting on October 3rd, 2019, granted conditional use for a drive-through facility in a light industrial district for Skyline Chili located at 0 Tiedemann Road. This approved by the planning commission now requires confirmation by majority vote by council pursuant to Section 114102A5, and that comes from Mr. Kolsar, our building commissioner. Any comments or questions? And make a recommendation that we confirm?
Second. To confirm, Meg Ryan Chucky?
Yes.
Andy Selverson?
Yes.
Kiki Pucci?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Barb Politzky?
Yes.
Ryan Van Kirk?
Yes.
Next up is ordinance 2019-40, and these following three are on second reading. Authorizing a community cost share transfer agreement with the Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District for the purchase and improvement of the property known as 10716 Bit Off Road. Ordinance 2019-41, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Quest Property Holdings LLC for the purchase of certain real property known as 11050 Memphis Avenue. And lastly, ordinance 2019-43, amending and updating the capital asset policy of the city of Brooklyn, Ohio. And that concludes our agenda for this evening. Does anyone else on council, the mayor, or any directors, do they want to add?
May I be recognized?
Yes.
I'd just like to thank all the veterans for their service to our country and wish them all a happy Veterans Day. Thank you.
Okay. As a reminder, at the conclusion of this meeting, we'll take about a five-minute break, and then we'll go jump right into our public safety committee meeting. Just one more reminder, don't forget to go out and vote next Tuesday, November 5th. You've heard it 500 times tonight, there is one more time. All right, I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Second. To adjourn, Meg Ryan Chucky?
Yes.
Andy Selverson?
Yes.
Kiki Pucci?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Barb Politzky?
Yes.
Ryan Van Kirk?
Yes. Thank you, everyone, have a blessed evening.